Mr. Chairman, you are live and the meeting is yours.
Thank you, Ed. Okay, I'd like to call to order the Coventry Planning Commission meeting Wednesday, May 26, 2021, and it is 6:30. First, I'd like the determination of a quorum. Mr. Rays?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny? Uh, Mr. Kenny is not here tonight. He is excused. Mr. Burke?
Present.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Mattson?
Yeah.
Secretary Lukowitz?
Here.
Vice Chairman Clunin?
Here.
Well Chairman Flynn is also here. We have a quorum of seven tonight. Yeah, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Before I start the meeting, I have a couple of announcements. First, I'd like to welcome Mr. Burke to the Planning Board tonight. This is his first meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Secondly, if you are here for the words at Red Brook Phase Three, that meeting will be continued to the June 23 meeting. Also, if the board, if the, if the board is okay with it, I'd like to move 7.8 and 7.9. I just want to flip-flop them, so 7.8 will become Sunset Tent in Sign Relocation and Torres Estates will be at the end. Can I get a motion for that, please?
Motion to move those two.
Motion to move to Mattson, second?
Aye, second.
Second by Ms. Lukowitz. Okay, Mr. Rays?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clunin?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Okay, first we have the approval of minutes. Number four, it's April 28th, 2021. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mr. Mattson and I have a motion by Mr. Rays. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Mr. Rays?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
I'm gonna abstain from a vote since I was not present at the meeting.
Okay, Mr. Burke, you will, that is, you will abstain. Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clunin?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye, so minutes are approved. We have two ratifications tonight. The first one, 5.1 is the Oaks at East Shaw, applicant Tyreland Company LLC, owner is Richard M. Boglin, ETA LS and Richard W. N. Herman, J. Boglin, CEO, Colton A. Collin A. Colson. It's a ratification of a, of a decision to approve phasing plan of the major subdivision AP 23 lots 47 and 47.001 in AP 32 lot 152, Zone R 20, located on Tyre Avenue. Do I have a motion to ratify?
Motion to ratification.
Motion by Mr. Mattson, do I have a second?
Aye, second.
A second by Ms. Lukowitz? Okay, Mr. Rays?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
I'm gonna abstain from this vote also, I was not present.
Okay, Mr. Burke, you will abstain. I believe you could ratify, but we'll, we'll take your abstain on that. Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clunin?
Aye.
Flynn also says aye, so the ratification for the Oaks is approved. 5.2, I have another ratification for Coventon subdivision, owners Coventon Realty LLC and Rockwood Realty LLC, applicant Reveddy Energy LLC. Ratification of a decision to approve master plan application of an 18 lot residential cluster subdivision, AP 85 lots 1 and 5.3 and AP 92 lot 1, Zone RR2 Rural Residential, that's on Coventon Road. Do I have a motion to ratify?
Motion to ratify.
Motion by Chairman Clunin, do I have a second?
Second. Glenn Anderson.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Okay, Mr. Rays?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clunin?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye, so that, that is ratified also. Okay, next on the agenda, number-
Chairman!
Yes?
Can I have a minute, please?
Absolutely.
I just want to find out who, um, who this phone number is that's in the participants. Could somebody identify themselves with the last four digits, 6467?
Yep, this is Matt Bruton from BL Companies.
Okay, thank you.
All set?
You're very welcome.
I'm all set.
Okay. I have number six, recommendation. This is a recommendation to the zoning board of review for special use permit. Balkan, 10 acres, owner Walter and Stephanie Balkan, applicant Walter Balkan. Applicant is seeking a special use permit to remove an existing family dwelling and construct a new one, utilizing the existing foundation with an addition of a 26 by 26 garage. It's AP 318 lot 57, Zone RR2, and again, 10 acres of Pine Road is the address. Anybody here representing the applicant?
Yes. I'm the applicant.
Hi. Go ahead. Do you want to just give us a quick presentation of what you want to do?
Uh, yeah, my plan on this project is to take down the existing house due to age and roof leaks. Expand a 26 by 26 garage on the left-hand side of the house, facing it from the road, connected by an eight-foot breezeway. On the backside of the house, I'll be going back six feet on the left side to expand the kitchen a little, and on the right side of the rear of the house, expand it back 14 feet to expand the master bedroom and bath. Keep it a one-level ranch. But from the front, the garage will be the difference. From the back, it'll go back a bit, nothing really off to the right-hand side except a bulkhead. And that's the bulkhead.
Anybody on the board have any questions for Mr. Balkan?
Somebody's chiming in there, Mr. Chair. Now there it goes.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
Existing dwelling is got, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, I can't tell, when the plan's on, I can't see my thing. Okay, so I'm not muted. Um, Mr. Balkan, at the beginning, you're gonna keep the existing building intact and add additions, is that correct?
No, my plan is to take the house off of the existing foundation and reutilize the foundation and add onto the existing foundation.
Okay.
I have had a engineer look at the foundation, give me a certification letter on it's being, that it's solid and usable.
Okay, that's all right.
Anybody else? Uh, Mr. Balkan, is there a cesspool there now?
No, there's a leach field galley system on the right-hand side of the house, on the north side of the house.
So you won't be, uh, you won't be changing that?
Um, I will be upgrading or replacing it, yes. I, in fact, those plans are out with the designer now.
Yeah, I'd like to hear that on the water property, as I, I grew up on that pond, I know it is a pine very well.
Yeah, no, I knew where you were. I remember the house. Played a lot of basketball in your front yard as a kid. Um, this house is actually not waterfront, and it is quite a ways off the water, and that was not a long ways, but it's 150-plus feet off the water where the septic would be, so it's not close.
Right.
Needing a sand filter or anything. I'm, I'm still waiting to see what the designer says.
Sounds good. Anybody else on the board have any questions? All right, seeing none, I'll, I'll entertain a motion for a recommendation to zoning.
Mr. Chair, Glenn Anderson, uh, I'll make a motion if you'll have it.
Absolutely, Glenn.
I make a favorable recommendation for a special use permit that will require a dimensional variance to the zoning board on behalf of the owner Walter and Stephanie Balkan, applicant Walter Balkan. The address is 10 acres of Pine Road, Platte, AP 318 lot 59, Zoned RR2. It's a single-family residential. The applicant seeking a special use permit to remove that existing family dwelling and construct a new one utilizing the existing foundation. Uh, the applicant also proposes an attached garage. Uh, that's gonna be a 26 by 26. Incorporate some of these findings of facts regarding the ingress and egress, the property. Uh, the analysis is that the property has permanent physical access to acres of Pine Road, and the construction of the proposed expansion will not affect the functionality of the existing driveway. And regards the off-street parking, sufficient off-street parking is available on the property. Utilities are already pre-existing. Uh, general compatibility with the lots, the abutting properties and surrounding neighborhood is primarily single family residential, and the proposal is compatible with the abutting lots. Uh, compatibility with the comprehensive pan, uh, plan, this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, granting that special use permit and dimensional variance will not affect the health, the safety, and the welfare of the neighborhood. I'd also like to incorporate the planning director's report in my motion.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a motion by Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Aye, second.
Second by Ms. Lukowitz, any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Rays?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clunin?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn, uh, also says aye. And so the, we have a favorable recommendation to zoning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, the 6.2 recommend, another recommendation to the zoning board of review for a special use permit. Madison Garage, owner Brian D. Madison and Jessica L. Hebert Madison. Applicant, Brian Madison. Applicant is seeking a special use permit to construct a 56 by 42 by 23 garage in the front yard, AP 17 lot 61, Zone R 20. The address is 1580 Hill Farm Road. Anybody here representing the applicant?
I am Brian Madison.
Hi, Brian. Would you like to just do a quick presentation for the board, please?
Sure, um, I'm building a, building a garage right on, it's, it kind of looks like it's my, my front lawn, but it's really not. It's, there's one right away to get there. Um, thank you, uh, thank you, Russell, I appreciate that. So it's gonna be going pretty much right to the, right where that Conex box is, if you can see it right there in that, in that corner there. Um, we're gonna be within that 20-foot radius to the property, property line, so the dimensional variances, I believe that's what that is, close to the property line, so uh, we had to file for that as well, but, um, and it's just gonna be for personal use for vehicles and, and storage for mostly kids' toys.
Yeah, Ron, if I may, about this one here, this one's unique because as you can see, this is Hill Farm Road right here, and this is all considered frontage. So because of where he wants to place it, basically, it's in front of his existing house. Although, if you look, this is more of a, um, compound. Uh, he has no physical access to Hill Farm right here. They all come through this road right here. All these four or five parcels all get access off this single driveway. So even though this is considered his frontage, there is no physical access here. He doesn't have access here, but he has to go before the zoning board for a, um, a dimensional variance, a special use permit. Um, and he'll also need a dimensional variance because of the side yard setback, but you're just here this evening, um, looking at the special use permit.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you, Russ, for pointing that out. Uh, anybody else on the board have any questions?
Mr. Chair, Glenn Anderson. Hey, Brian.
Hello.
Glenn. I just got a question. What, what are you doing? That's not gonna, um, impede anyone's view of the lake, right, where you're putting this? It doesn't appear to be.
No, no one's, no one's there. Actually, behind it there, it's, there's a huge drop-off right where those woods, like, right with the, right behind that Conex box there, it drops off probably like 20 feet at least, but no, no one's, no one's view is obstructed, uh, which is great, thank goodness, and, uh, and and luckily, my, my father-in-law is my neighbor, so he's all for it.
Oh, nice. Lucky you. Hey, so also, there's no, I don't know, I'm just asking, you, you got a nice-sized loft, I think, going in up there, is that accurate?
Uh, it's, it's just storage, though. There's nothing going up there but storage, so.
Alright, thank you, Glenn.
Yep, thank you.
I'm done, Mr. Chair, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Clunin.
Um, and, and this is more for Russell. If, Russell, if, if this if this structure was placed in the rear yard, would this have come before us? For dimensional variances or no? I want to make sure I understood what you were saying.
No, it would not have. If he had put it in the rear yard, the rear yard in this situation-
No, no, you answered my question. I just, because in other words, it's really out of our purview to get into the discussion about, um, the setback. I, I would have had a question had that been in our purview, but the, the issue before us is a recommendation for the special use permit because it's going in the front yard, and I think you already depicted what the issue is with that, so I'm fine.
Right, and the zoning board is the one that's ultimately gonna have to, uh, make the decision on this.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yep.
Hey, Russ, can you take that map down, please?
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else on the board have any questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for a recommendation to zoning.
Mr. Chair, Glenn Anderson, I'll, uh, give a motion if you'll have it.
Absolutely, go ahead, Glenn.
I give a favorable, uh, recommendation to go to zoning for a special use permit and dimensional variance for the own applicant Brian D. Madison and Jessica L. Hebert Madison. Applicant Brian Madison, address 1580 Hill Farm Road, AP 17 lot 61, Zone R 20 Residential, Single Family Residential. The applicant is seeking the special use permit to construct a 56 by 42 by 23 garage at the front yard. Uh, the applicant will also appear before the zoning board for that dimensional variance for the height and side yard setbacks. Covering the findings of facts via egress and, uh, ingress and egress, the property has permanent physical access to Hill Farm Road via the shared driveway. The construction of the proposed expansion will not alter or affect the functionality of the existing driveway. Off-street parking, uh, sufficient off-street parking is available on this property. Regarding utilities, they are already pre-existing. General compatibility with the lots in the same or abutting zone districts, the abutting properties and surrounding neighborhood are primary single-family residential. The abutting properties share the same driveway, which creates an instance where the proposed uh, use doesn't fit with the zoning ordinance. General compatibility, the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and, uh, granting this special use permit and dimensional variances will not affect the health, safety, and welfare of the, uh, existing neighborhood. I'd like to incorporate the planning director's, uh, comments and full report in my motion. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Rays, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll, uh, take a roll. Mr. Rays?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Sorry. Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clunin?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. You have a favorable recommendation to zoning.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, 7.1, we have a request for a waiver of a special overlay district design guidelines. Westerly Community Credit Union, property owner Samuel Shapiro. Applicant. Applicant. NES Group. NES Group. Causes a signed design waiver to allow- Internally illuminated. Illuminated. AP 2 lot 2. 5 Moose Neck Hill Road. Getting some feedback, I think. Some feedback, I think.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, um, Walter, you're all done. Are you gonna stay on all night, or? You're muted, I can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I was just checking out, but I'll get off for you if I mess things up.
No, you don't have to. I was just asking, that's all. I just was just checking out.
Checking out the whole process, guys.
Okay.
Okay, anybody here for the applicant, for the community?
Hi, yes, Melissa Faraday, I'm here from NES Group. I believe Andrew Rogers from Westerly Community Credit Union is also on, and, um, Mark from Metro Signs is on as well.
My conservator, that is me, Tom Dunham, is not here, I am taking his place.
Thank you.
Okay, would you like me to start, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, of course, Westerly Community Credit Union is, um, constructing their, uh, new branch at 2405 Moose Neck Hill Road, and, um, it's Zone General Business One. It's also in this, uh, special overlay district, and the allowance in that district is for one wall sign, for 60 square feet. We're proposing two wall signs at 29.8 square feet each, which is under the 60 square feet. We're also, uh, proposing a internally illuminated pylon sign, tenant pylon sign. Um, the, um, maximum, uh, allowance in that district is 20.5 square feet. Um, our proposal is for 46.1 square feet. Uh, the maximum height in that district is 20 feet. Our height on, uh, this sign is 16.6 feet. Would you like me to describe the signs, or, um, have you-
Pretty good, uh, print of the signs. If you want to, if you want to describe it for the board, that's fine.
Okay, this is, okay, this is the pylon sign, and it's internally illuminated, like I said, and you can see the night view there, it's very subtle. Um, it's, um, it's, uh, the sign itself, those are the, um, panels. The tenant panels are 79 inches high by 81 inches wide by 24 inches deep, which equals 46.1 square feet. Um, the, um, allowance in, in that, uh, on this property is 20.5 square feet. And once again, I said, the height is, uh, total height is 16.6 square feet, and, um, 20 foot is the, 20 feet is the allowance. We feel this, this proposal, um, certainly, uh, meets the purpose of the uh, zoning, SPD zoning, planning, overlay district, especially, um, paragraph B, the purpose, the purpose of this special management district is to revitalize and develop. I can't pronounce that, the old Avenue, Moose Neck Hill Road and Sandy Bottom Road, so as to dramatically improve the functioning and appearance of this arterial corridor. Create redevelopment opportunities and create jobs as well as enhance the town's economic base. We feel that this design, uh, meets those standards, um, and it also, um, complements the building in both scale and design. Um, this area, as you know, is, uh, more rural, um, and, uh, of course, I've read the, the, um, the, um, SPD, um, sign recommendations, and, um, I believe that would be more for up near the village, but, uh, that's another thing. I hope I described, uh, the sign well. We've got, uh, stone piers to match the facade, part of the facade at the entryway of the building, and the colors match the building.
Did a great job, and I happen to agree with you, and I, I want to thank you for doing business in Coventry. And anybody else on the board have any questions on the waiver?
Mr. Chair, Glenn Anderson, this is just one sign, right, you said? Not two? I thought I heard you say two.
Also in the proposal are two wall signs.
Oh, okay. Those are, uh, those are pictured or no?
Yes, they, they should be, um, they were, I believe they were sent to you, yep. That one, uh, is on the stone facade underneath the entry portico.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Okay, and the other one, that's facing the parking lot, and the one below is, uh, face is on the front facade facing, um, Moose Neck Hill Road.
Those aren't illuminated, right, or are they?
Yes, they are. They're halo-lit illuminated, which, uh, do I have to, should I explain halo-lit to anybody, or does everybody understand what that is? It's actually, the, um, the face and the sides of the letters are aluminum, the rear is acrylic, and, um, it is mounted onto the facade with 1.5-inch offsets, so that the sign actually, um, it's, um, it, um, reflects off the facade, it's not directly, um, at the, um, on the front of the, on the front of the letters.
And, um, the, the tall sign on the road, that's, that's, uh, that's double-sided, right, or is that single-sided?
That's correct, that's correct. That, that would be double-sided.
Alright, and is that, is that gonna, uh, turn off at any hour of the night when business hours are not, uh, operational, or is that gonna stay lit?
I will, um, I will pass that one to, um, Mr. Faraday.
So, yeah, so we actually haven't discussed the hours, um, so if you'd like it to shut off at a certain time, that's not an issue. Um, typically, you know, they have other locations throughout Rhode Island, and they do have to shut them off at certain times, so whether, um, you know, you wanted at 10 or 11 to shut off, that wouldn't be an issue. We could certainly do that, if you prefer.
Yeah, I, I'd suggest that, only because, you know, these signs, they come before us, we, we've tried to get rid of them, but I understand, uh, the reason for it. We're just, we're just trying to, you know, keep it as, uh, as rural as possible, even in our, you know, business districts. And I, I do echo, uh, the chair's comments, and thank you for your business, and then, uh, this is really nice, uh, really nice sign for what we're getting.
It, this is, uh, Andrew Rogers from the Westerly Community Credit Union, and, and thank you, uh, all for, uh, for speaking with us tonight. Um, this, this sign, uh, just to, to, um, add just a little bit more, um, it, the, the, uh, the property, 2405 Moose Neck Hill Road is a, is a, a land condominium, so we're obviously sharing this sign with our, um, our peers in the, uh, the same lot, so what we can definitely do is speak with, uh, Subway as an example. They'd be ones probably to, to close the latest in that group, and, uh, just make sure, you know, if it's, if it's nine o'clock, well, we'll shut it off at nine o'clock, save some energy, uh, no, no trouble at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. You all set, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Anybody else from the board?
I, I do. I just want to make sure I, I understand the, what's before us, again, as opposed to what's before the zoning board. Um, is this sign not meet the dimensional requirements, or is it, is it strictly the, uh, illumination that's the issue, or both? It's the illumination, and I believe, uh, Russell could correct me on this. I believe the size of the sign, I believe, uh, we need the waiver as well. Right, but some of that's, some of that's for zoning board, that's what I want to find out.
Excuse me, if I may. Uh, I am not of the opinion that this sign needs any, I'm looking at section 1532 C of the zoning ordinance, and it says one freestanding sign for each, um, and not to exceed 48 square feet per side may be allowed. I believe, um, this is well within, less than the 48 square feet per side, so I do not believe they needed any zoning vary, um, dimensional relief from zoning at all. The only reason they were here this evening was to seek a waiver on the internally illuminated sign like we've done on every other one in the past.
Yep, and that's, that's kind of what I thought, although there was a mention in the presentation that there was-
Yes, he did mention that, and, um, I, I did not correct him, I was waiting, but, um, I, I disagree with his, um, his interpretation of the ordinance.
Including the height?
Yes, uh, the, it says, uh, the height right here, um, we are allowed a maximum of 20 feet, and I believe the sign shall not exceed 20 feet in height above the finished grade, and I believe this one is 199 inches. Which did you, sir, I believe you said that was approximately 16 feet?
16.6 feet, yes.
16.6. So I think they're all- So I think they're all set, Mr. Colonial?
Yeah, that's right. So we're here, we're basically just dealing with the interior illumination. So again, kind of following up on what Mr. Anderson said, and I realize we are not going to pin down a time tonight. So we'll just leave it to the applicant to have that information available for the zoning board as far as the, the, the earliest they want to shut the sign off. I think some of them, we've just said midnight, so, but we'll see how late Subway is open, so I'm all set.
Anybody else on the board? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the waiver request.
Mr. Chair, Glenn Anderson, I'll entertain a motion if you'll have it.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Favorable recommendation for the, to go forward with the application for the project Wesley Community Credit Union and the overlay district guidelines. Owner Samuel Shapiro, applicant NES Group, address two oh five Moose Neck Hill Road, AP two lots two, zone, general business one, lot size one point nine acre. And again, this is just the applicant proposal to install an internally lit aluminum sign. Favorable recommendation for the applicant. That's all.
I have a motion by Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
I see.
Second by Ms. Lukowitz. Harry Nana, I'll, I'll take a roll call. Mr. Rayes.
Aye.
Mr. Burke.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Colonial.
Aye.
Jim and Flynn also says aye. Waiver is granted.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Yeah, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank the board as well for hearing us on this, and also Russell Crossman, been a great help in us preparing for this and with his advice. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have a seven point two. I have a pre-application plan for Town Farm Road subdivision. Owners Glenn T. Skirka, Karen Skirka, David J. Skirka, and Brett D. Windrow. Applicants saying proposed two lot minus subdivision, AP three twenty four, lot one hundred point one, zone RR three. And the address is Zero Town Farm Road. I just would like to say that if anybody wants to go out to this property, we are not doing site walks. We're still sticking to the COVID restrictions. You, you are welcome to go out there personally. So is anybody here representing the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Eric Prevy, P R I V as in Victor E. I'm a registered professional engineer with DePreet Engineering, offices at two Stafford Court in Cranston, Rhode Island. Also with me tonight is Glenn Skirka, one of the owners as well. Is it okay to share my screen? I'll be very brief. It looks like you have a very long agenda tonight, so we'll be brief. We think it should be pretty, hopefully pretty straightforward. But is it, is it okay to share the screen? I'll do a very brief presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
It's a pre-application.
Okay. All right, so hopefully everybody can, everyone see this okay first?
Yes.
Okay, as mentioned, it is Sessors Platt, three twenty four, lot one hundred point, one hundred point one. It's a thirteen point two acre parcel. I'm currently on sheet two, which is the aerial, kind of shows the, the, what the existing conditions of, on the site are, also shows the surrounding area. It is a thirteen point two acre parcel. It's zoned RR three, so three acres per lot zoning. Also requires two hundred and twenty five feet of frontage per lot. There is currently, the existing lot itself has five hundred and twelve feet of frontage along Top Town Farm Road here. It is also located along Flat River Reservoir. There is some waterfront along the outside here as well. As you can see from the aerial image, it probably speaks best just looking at this aerial. It's a very recent aerial. It is a wooded site. And then there is a field area that is also located as well, directly kind of in the southwest corner, along the water area. There is a small cottage that's located in the back over here as well, and you'll see that on our existing conditions plan. This area is serviced by private wells and by onsite wastewater treatment systems. So I'll go briefly to the proposal. So it's a two, two lot minor subdivision, no street creation. Let me zoom out here. Two lot minor subdivision. There's no street creation here. So they both have legal frontages directly off of Town Farm Road here. We are not requesting any relief for any waivers from the planning commission. Lot number one has two hundred and eighty seven feet of frontage. Again, the minimum required would be two hundred and twenty five feet of frontage. And then lot number two has the two hundred and twenty five feet required under the zoning. Lot one has three point nine acres of, of area. Again, three acres minimum would be what was needed. And then lot number two is a nine point three acre parcel. We did depict the house and what we envisioned where the house will go. The existed, the proposed driveway will go, there's actually a existing gate here today, a gate and drive that comes in directly in this area here today. So it'd be coming in that same location where the gate is. Three bedroom, single family home in this area. Again, we're only at the pre-application stages, but we're already looking at it now. We know we have a septic design. We do have soil testing that has now been completed. That was done by the class four soil evaluator. So all DEM witnessed soil test bits on site, so approved testing. Ranges in about six feet to twelve, excuse me, six feet to ten feet, groundwater tables on site. The septic has been designed, again, you'll be seeing this when we come back for preliminary plan for the two lot. But also thinking of things like, we have the drywall shown on here to be able to receive the roof runoff. And then we do have a small infiltration stone trench to go along the driveway as, as well. So that's what we're thinking for the stormwater on lot one. Nothing is proposed on lot number two. The nearest work is proposed well over two hundred feet from the, the existing, from Flat River Reservoir over here. And it's within the existing area that's already presently grassed today. So very limited tree cutting that would need, be needed here. You can kind of see the tree line that comes around today. Be a little bit to just carve out for the new, the new home in this area. Again, we will, we will be back for a preliminary plan for the two lot minor, because there's no street creation. There would, there was not a butter notice that would end up going at that time. But it's kind of my general overview. Obviously, be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? I don't see any. I think you're good to go.
Okay, excellent. Appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have another pre-application, seven point three. It's proposed retail store. Owners Michael W. and Kimberly K. Holtz, applicant Garrett Holmes LLC. Proposal is to demolish the existing building and construct a new retail store with the associated parking and site improvements. AP fifty six lots nine and eleven, zone VMC. It's located on four ninety five Washington Street. Anybody here for representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph Brennan from the Law Office of Joe Shikarchi here on behalf of the applicant. I do also have the engineers on and the architect on, if the board has any questions. But the application that you have before you is for two different lots. Platt fifty six lots nine and eleven, known as four ninety five Washington Street and Zero MacArthur Boulevard. The lots do touch each other, and as you can see from our proposed retail building, we'll be using the Zero MacArthur Boulevard as an entry and exit as well, to take away some of the traffic from Washington Street. So there'll be two entrances and exits onto the property from there. We are zoned Village Main Street Commercial. Given the plan that we do have, the only waivers we would need from the zoning board would be for a proposed retail building that is ten thousand six hundred and forty square feet, as only ten thousand is allowed by code. It would be a major land development, and in doing so, we would be connecting to the sewers. So we'd have to go through town council as well for the sewer approval. That's our understanding. Our utilities and everything will be underground to the best of our abilities, with water, gas, electric, cable, and telephone. And what we'll be doing is, we'll be taking, this property is currently vacant. It's been vacant for a really long time. And it's had several different restaurants over the years. We think that what we can do is we could put together a really nice retail building and bring some life and put some tax rolls back onto the town. In addition, we'll have two handicap spaces, a loading space, a loading ramp. Our dumpster will be in an enclosure. We'll have site lighting that faces down and won't be a nuisance to other neighboring properties. And we'll have a concrete walkway as well. In regards to stormwater, we'll be collecting the stormwater in an underground basin and keeping it on site the best that we can, per the engineering standards of zero stormwater runoff when creating a new project. So this project has a lot of phases, a lot of steps that will go through the town. As I said, it's a major land development, so it would go to master plan approval. It would go before the town council, before the zoning board for the zoning, and then back to planning for preliminary, and then final approvals. The, there was, as part of our application, there's fifty four parking spaces that are required. We'll be providing thirty five as part of the plan. We believe it's the only need that would be necessary for the use. And we do realize that the, under the, the town sections from the recommendations, that the town engineer and planning commission, if applicable, can lower the minimum parking spaces if they feel that it's warranted. So we'll be exploring that with you. That way, we can ensure that, if not, that we have to ask for that before the zoning board as well. So those would be the only two items. Besides that, we meet all setbacks, lot sizes, landscaping, proposed percentage of building space on the property as well. So if the board has any questions, we, I have the engineers and the architects on that can answer. But obviously, this is the pre-application phase, so the heavy engineering hasn't been done, but I know they'll do their best to answer.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I got a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Rayes.
So it's fifty four, and you're gonna have thirty, thirty five spots? Did you say that?
Yes.
But you have enough, you have enough land to put fifty four though, right? And that you're in the back, back parking lot.
Yeah, I believe we do. We can add more back there. I know that there's, they did do a wetlands, a preliminary review. I don't know all the results. I don't know if maybe that's why they didn't include it up there. And I also know that sometimes big parking lots are kind of frowned upon when they can provide landscaping and green space. So I think they were just trying to balance their needs with the need for aesthetics and landscaping. But if the town wants us to add more, we could certainly explore that and provide that at the master plan stage.
All right, thank you. As I want to know. Thank you.
Anybody else on the board have any questions?
I have a question. I just want to make sure, has the applicant been made aware of the Bruce Hagaman's comments with regard to the gas service on the abutting lot? And he had a couple of other things. I think that was the only one. I just want to make sure you have that.
Absolutely. If I could speak to that, my name's Kimberly Masewick, and I'm an engineer with PL Companies. So the gas connection was, can I actually screen share, Russell, or? Didn't, yep, okay. So there's the pretty picture, but can you all see this?
Yeah.
The building, yep, okay. So the gas line coming down here, originally on that original plan we filed, we had it connected to this gas line. But there's actually the existing gas line for this building comes right up here. So we should be, we just changed that connection point.
So it's been addressed?
Yes.
Okay. And one more follow up, I, I mean, it was just kind of a question when I looked at the map, and I, and I know the attorney referenced wetlands. But was there any consideration given to, rather than combining the lots, moving the property line? And then, I mean, I was trying to determine if that lot to the rear would actually be a, a suitable building lot for residential structure in an R twenty zone. I don't know if you looked at that. Hundred twenty feet of frontage at twenty thousand square feet.
Over, you're trying to use.
In that lawn area, yeah, up in the back.
Um, we, we did not look at that. We could entertain that, but that's.
I'm just leaving it up, I'm just leaving it up to you. Otherwise, it would just be a vacant lot that you're gonna have to cut the grass all the time.
Yeah, well, we, we did leave this area here for future parking, if, you know, ever necessary. We wanted to make sure that we have the space, so that if, you know, we ask for relief on it, if somebody else comes in, there's still space for them to do.
And that was the other thing. You're, you're looking for relief for, for basically six hundred and forty square feet of building area. Is that because you've got a franchise or something coming in that requires this size building?
It, it's a national retail chain, yes. So it's a prototype.
Okay, but your understanding is regardless of the town ordinance regarding square footage, the volume of users and the time that they're going to be in the store, you can get by with the thirty five spaces?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All set, Rick?
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else on the board have any questions?
Yes, what is the proposed retail store?
We, we have non-disclosure agreements, so that we can't actually name names. So all I really can tell you is the proposed use at this time. As far as its retail use, ten thousand six hundred and forty square feet. We're under legal contract where we can't disclose the information.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Glenn Anderson.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Yeah, just a follow up. So we're kind of, you know, putting the, you know, the cart before the horse, because, you know, secrets are not, something's gonna go there, and it might be popular, might not be, but, you know, just keep that parking spaces open, please, to determination. And, and I would attempt to find room if possible, because that's a large number. I mean, if, if you go percentage wise, what is that? Twenty percent, right? We're trying to bring it down. So I just want to make sure that we do have substantial, because I don't believe there's any off-street parking, maybe across the street on the old chance to hold a school, but. Let's just make sure we got the right amount of parking spaces for whatever's going there. I, I know that's to come anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Anybody else? Anybody else have any questions? Okay, I don't, I don't see any other questions. I will, I will state again, if anybody wants to go out there, they certainly can go out and see the, the location. I don't see any other questions from the board members. I think you're good to go.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Russell, for your help.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, next on seven point four, we have another pre-application. It's the Iocanelli Platt. Owner Marcelo and Melinda Iocanelli. Applicant saying proposed two lot minus subdivision with one existing house. AP seventy two lots fifty one point one. It's zoned R twenty. Location is one sixty eight Reed Avenue and Rainville Avenue. Anybody here representing the applicant?
My name is Richard Coelho. I am representing the applicant.
Go ahead.
So I don't know if Russ can share any of the documents we provided, but it's, it's, it's a pretty straightforward subdivision that is conforming. It's currently approximately a one acre lot that we are splitting into two lots in a conforming fashion. So in the, in the paperwork, you can see record lot one has an existing house, which we're not in any way changing the existing house, and the existing house is conforming. Record lot two, or the proposed record lot two would show, it would be a, a conforming lot of approximately twenty thousand square feet that would need a septic system. And from my understanding, Rainville Avenue does have city water that we could tap into for city water. And that's, I mean, that's pretty much the summation of, of what we're doing, other than, you know, it is all conforming, meets all the setbacks.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions?
Let's see.
I'm sorry?
Just asking the board members if they have any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep.
I'm not seeing any. I think you're good to go.
Okay, thank you.
Very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next we have another pre-application, seven point five. It's uh Mu Cow Solar, owners Norton, N A R Y A L L C. CEO Frank A. Robertson, the fourth. Lot twenty-seven point one. In Mu Cow LLC, CEO Leo Blaze. Lot twenty-eight, applicant Centrica Business Solutions. Applicant proposes to construct a four point five megawatt direct current DC ground mounted major solar installation, AP three oh four lots twenty-seven point one and twenty-eight. Zoned RR five, locations twenty-four, forty-six Victory Highway. Anybody here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Joelle Rocha for the um applicant Centrica Business Solutions. I hate to break the flow of how fast these pre-apps are going, but um so, you know, this is a pre-app. Uh, we've got a lot of design ahead of us. Uh, Russ stole most of my thunder and um letting you know the background of the property and the procedure, which I'm sure you're familiar with. This is a land development project as well and we, as well, we also need a special use permit from the zoning board. Um, the materials have our site proposed conceptual site plan in them. I have Jason Gold, um, our project engineer on who I'll turn it over to. We'd be happy to get any feedback um to take this matter forward from this board at this stage. Jason?
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Jason Gold. I'm a civil engineer with E S S Group. If I can share my screen. I will review the plans with you. In one second. Okay, and does everybody see the plans now?
Yes.
All right, fantastic. Uh, the property is uh AP three oh four lots twenty-seven point one and twenty-eight. There are two adjacent lots on the easterly side of Victory Highway. Uh, right along the West Greenwich Town Line. Lot twenty-seven point one is the lot with frontage on Victory Highway. It's approximately thirty-three acres. Lot twenty-eight is behind it to the east. It's roughly twenty-seven point one acres. Both lots are wooded. There is a single-family residence on the front lot, twenty-seven point one right here. Uh, both lots are zoned rural residential, RR five. We did a desktop review using GIS data and aerial photographs and identified multiple wetlands throughout the site. They are swamps and streams. There's the New Snack River. Uh, the wetlands are located towards the rear of lot twenty-seven point one in this area. As well as throughout lot twenty-eight in the back. There are also two historical cemeteries uh right next to each other in the northern portion of lot twenty-seven point one. Neither lot is located within the natural heritage area or the one-hundred-year flood zone. Zooming out a little, the abutting properties are largely wooded. There are a couple residences on either side of the site on Victory Highway. The old sawmill farm is located on the opposite side of Victory Highway. And it's not shown on this aerial, but there's a new solar development on the West Greenwich side uh on the south here. The conceptual project is all located on lot twenty-seven point one. The intent is to combine lot twenty-seven point one and lot twenty-eight, merging those into one, one hundred and nine acre lot. But again, all the work will be done on lot twenty-seven point one. Zoom into that area for you. The conceptual project is a four and a half megawatt DC ground-mounted solar array, along with the associated poles, electrical equipment, driveway and fence and stormwater uh best management practices. It's a twelve point seven acre array surrounded by a fourteen point seven acre fence. Access will be from Victory Highway along an existing gravel driveway. That'll be widened and improved as needed and then extended up along the array to provide access to the equipment pad. The final ground cover within the array will be grass. The ground cover between the fence and the vegetated buffer uh will, the undercover, understory will remain and stumps of shade trees that will be cut uh will remain in that area as well. The concept design uh complies with the solar power generator special regulations. Panel heights won't exceed twelve feet. Grading is expected to be minimal. It's, it's fairly flat out here already. Uh, all the electrical lines will be underground with the exception of uh, the utility poles between the equipment pad and the interconnection point on Victory Highway. All the yard setbacks will be met, one hundred foot front yard, eighty-five foot side yard and hundred and fifty foot uh rear yards. The proposed array is, coverage is less than the fifteen percent allowed. It's actually about eleven point seven percent with this concept. And that's after the lots are merged. The forty-foot vegetated buffer of the existing vegetation will remain around the perimeter. And the access road it works out the um one of the requirements is that the access road needs to be angled to obstruct views of the array. And the existing driveway is already angled, so that works out nicely. The array will be surrounded by a seven-foot fence and no exterior lighting is proposed. And again, this is a concept plan. Uh, it'll, I'm sure, change a little as the design progresses as we, as we work through permitting based on your feedback, feedback from others. Um, this is all GIS, so as we get survey data and, and field delineate wetlands and do our stormwater calculations and such, it'll this will morph, but this is our concept at this stage and I'm happy to take questions and any um feedback you might have um to get this started.
Anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Michael Burke.
Go ahead, Mr. Burke.
Um, I don't have any questions, uh, as much as I, I have just some feedback or a couple of comments. Um. I, I understand the need for renewable energy and solar a- and I commend you on that and I, I think you've you got a great location um for a project here. Not a lot of uh abutters. You're in a rural part of town. Um. Across the street from a business, which uh is, you know, only going to be populated certain hours of the day. The biggest concern in terms of uh residences are just that one house to the north and one house to the south. Um. But the concerns that I do have, I have two. Uh, and the first one, just being the buffer of forty feet. One of the biggest complaints uh I find with these solar developments is just no disrespect to the solar panels, but no one wants to look at them, no one wants to see them. Um. A- and especially when driving down the road. Forty feet, uh, I know that's what's required and that's, you meet that criteria, but I just, I don't, I don't think forty feet's enough. I don't think a hundred feet of a setback off the roadway is enough um in terms of being able to see it, but I, I find an even bigger issue that, that could, could arise. Um, you're a hundred feet off of Victory Highway. Across the street from a business, i- if someone pulls out of this business and a car is flying down Victory Highway and they swerve to avoid a collision. They're not gonna stop in a hundred feet and they, they could possibly end up in this solar array. Um. You know, a hundred, a hundred feet's pretty, sounds like a lot, but it's really not a lot. That's pretty close to the road. Um, so those are the two concerns that I have. I, I just, I'd like to see it pushed back off the roadway a little bit. For, one for in terms of buffering for the, to being able to see it. Um, you know, the potential is even there for glare. Uh, would it be in a hundred feet from the road? Um, sun glare i- is, could be a possibility as well. Um, and then just again for the, the safety factor, I don't want to see anyone getting an accident, but if they do, I certainly don't want to see them end up you know, in a, in a solar array that close to the road. So those, those are my comments. Um, I'd just like to see it move back off the roadway a little bit. That's all.
Great questions, Mr. Burke. Is, is there any reason why the array can't be pushed back off the road?
Well. It depends on really where these, where this um welland ends up, once we, once we delineate it. Right? So if this welland ends up further back, you know, then that might give us some more room to also push this um back from the highway. Of course, the other side of that is also you don't want to be too close, too close to the welland, so uh we're kind of, we're kind of squeezed in there. Um, but we can certainly look at those, at those concerns. Um. You know, we we can look at the existing vegetated buffer. Um. And get back to you at master plan stage um regarding how uh, the house, how adequate that vegetation is now and whether or not anything is needed to be done to um fill that in. Uh, as far as cars coming off the road, um, you know, there are trees there now. Um, so I think that might might mitigate that, that concern. Um.
Cars always seem to find their way through the trees.
Right. Yeah, so now we can certainly uh take a look at all those and um, and address them when we come back for the master plan.
I know you can, I, I like the, I thought about the addition of adding a berm. I know a berm would help, um, but then again, if a car did go off the road, now the car would be launched into the air. So it's kind of, uh, it's a, it's a tough spot to, to be in. Um, I just think a little bit more distance i- is gonna mitigate all of those issues.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Clooney.
Yeah, I, I just, um. I echo Mr. Burke's concern. The first thing I saw on the plan and, and the only, with a few solar projects that we have approved in town. Um, the feedback I'm getting is despite looking at these one-dimensional plans, people don't like to see them. Um, and I guess there's one, I know it's out in the west end where uh despite even the buffer and what was supposed to, I, I guess you could still see it from the road and it irritates the folks. So um if you can push it back um further, that's great. Uh, either that or you might have to, you know, consider reducing the size. And we'll leave it at that. My, my other question was what provisions are being made uh to maintain access to the two historic cemeteries?
I'm not sure if there's access to the cemeteries now.
We can look at that.
That's a good question, though. We can um, we'll definitely look at that.
I'm pretty sure there has, this, there should be access maintained to the cemeteries through.
Right. Yeah, no, I mean, we could, well, yeah, we'll take a look at that.
And I know there's conflicts. You don't want people going back and forth to the cemetery through your access. It's probably have to be separate, so. Uh, but just a thought. And I don't know that it has to be vehicular access, by the way. It just has to be pedestrian access.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. We can um definitely look at that for the next stage.
So.
I, can I, Michael Burke, can I add a comment? Can I piggyback on that?
Go ahead.
If it's just pedestrian access to these cemeteries, um, you're gonna need a place to park the cars and there's no place to park a car on the side of Victory Highway. I don't know if that's safe either.
And who do the cemeteries belong to?
Usually historic cemeteries have belonged to the town. Well, when I was in West Warwick, we had to take care of all the historical cemeteries. So usually Coventry, I most likely takes care of them. DPW.
All right. I don't know of it being that far out, but. What about?
Into that.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Ms. Lookwoods.
Uh, what about putting a chain link fence behind the buffer?
I believe there is a chain link fence behind the buffer already.
Should surround the array.
I think, are you?
I can see it on one side.
Yep. So what we're gonna do, um, what we typically do on these projects, we have a landscape architect involved who will survey, go out there, survey what is in that, like Jason said, what's in that forty-foot buffer? And what can be done? We, we know the concern. We do, we do a lot of these about seeing um the array from the road, so we're aware of that concern. I think we could probably look at the one you're talking about in the west end and see what's missing. Uh, which may be helpful for some type of infill for that. Um, and then we'll look at obviously the other issues we brought up too. Not to cut you off, I'm sure there are more comments, but I just wanted to say that's what we typically do.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair Glenn Anderson.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Uh, you know, just a statement first, you know, this is going in district one. And I'm sure you'll be well within the uh confines of our uh, of our ordinance, which is a strong ordinance. Could be better. Every evolving, ever evolve. So just in district one, you know, this stated several times in the comprehensive plan that no commercial, you know, or in, in industrial development really shouldn't occur just to help maintain the rural character of district one. I just want to be aware, there's several moments in the comp plan where it says that. And I'm just uh putting it out there now, just in case you feel as though I come off uh too strong or uh or against it, because I'm not against renewable energy. Just where it goes. And I also wonder, I'm on your website. Is there any uh local uh projects that you did in the, in the, uh, I see the vineyard in, in the tri-state area, uh, land, landlocked, um? Anything local, Connecticut, Rhode Island? Mass?
Yep, wherein uh Jason could probably speak to that, because he does all the projects. I, I'm on a bunch too, but um, Jason's probably got a, a better, and I actually have Colleen from Centrica on too, so she can also weigh in on that, but we are doing local projects.
Are there any in Rhode Island?
Yep.
And that already been completed?
Ca- uh, Colleen, you want to weigh in on? Or Jason? Where we are on those?
Colleen Di Benedetto from Centrica. Um, we have um a project in uh, off Gray Lane in Hopton that is in commission. Uh, we are building uh in North Queenstown uh and with socket. Trying to think if there's anything else under construction at the moment. And we do have um several projects that are in progress.
Okay, I, I heard some of that, but I'm, you know, I'll figure it out. We'll talk, um. Have they all been uh around the five megawatt uh sizes or smaller or larger?
Uh, can you hear me?
Uh, not, not that great. You're a little muffled, Colleen.
Um, let me see if I can fix that.
I just can't see it on the website. I, you know, I'd like to see it mapped out and the sizes of what we did locally. We can uh, we can cover this later on if there's an issue. I just, I'd just like to know where these other ones are and if you did the five megawatts on the ground uh solar array before. Fortunately for uh Coventry and us out here, we have a lot of land and people are combining it to do these things. I just didn't know if the same practices occur in other parts of Rhode Island.
Well, they do. I do a lot of solar work. Yeah, this is actually on the small end of kind of what's, what's going on all around here, especially in West Greenwich next door. So. So not that, that's, should be the standard, but that's been my experience. We can get you a, a list as well for master plan. That's not a, not an issue at all.
Yeah, that's fine. I was just wondering. I don't see it on the website. That's all. I would think there's something. Nobody, maybe you can add that to the website.
Yeah.
All right. I, I'm done for now. Thanks so much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
I think my microphone is working now.
Can we pull that map down? Can we pull that map down?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other board members have any questions for the app?
I would like to piggyback.
Go ahead, Mr. Race.
Yeah, I would like to have some, uh, next, next meeting when they, they come back, something in the files, showing some, uh, pictures. Cause well, West Greenwich, I drive by West Greenwich and you can see it on the street. It's, it's not presentable to me in the areas of West Greenwich. I don't think so. Cause you're, you're in certain areas, you want that rural community. Stick that sticking out like a foresome. I just want to see some pictures of what they have done in the past. They could bring it back to the next meeting.
You mean you can see them in West Greenwich?
Yes, there's one that's right on, right, right across the street.
Okay.
Down the street over there.
Yeah, yeah. Yep. Okay.
As Mr. Burke stated, I think that's a consensus of a lot of people in that Western end. They don't, they just don't want to see it. They're not against it. They just don't want to see it. So the, the more buffer, the better, in my opinion.
Understood.
And sometimes it's the elevation of the roadway as you approach, not so much when you're standing in front of the property. That's, that's the problem.
Right.
And then when you go put trees in to reach the height that you need to block it, then you can't get the sun. So.
Mr. Flynn, I just want to share my screen for just a quick second, if that's okay with you.
Go ahead, Russ.
Um, just to.
While Russ, while Russ is doing this, I, I want to make one comment also, um, like Mr. Clooney and it just said, it's the elevation and the height of the roadway. I, I actually did a drive by out there this morning and I stopped on the side of the road and the road, here you go, you could see it. The road is elevated and, and it does slope down into all of the lots in, in that area.
Yeah. So basically here's their driveway that, uh, they were talking about. So I, I know this looks heavily vegetated, but they look like they're all deciduous to me, which means all those leaves are going to fall and drop come, um, the fall. And, uh, I don't see a lot of, uh, conifers or, uh, firs or pines. So, um, I just wanted the board to get a quick idea of what the roadway looked like if they had.
And additionally, the state has a hundred feet of right of way for that highway. I don't believe they're using all of it. So at any time they could come, come along and clear out their vegetation to, to make a clear zone. So we have to go beyond that.
That's a valid point. All right. I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm a firm believer that, that you, your biggest ally in screening these things is, is, is distance. Uh, you, you know, you can only plant and add so much vegetation in, in 40 feet. And then if you over vegetate it, trying to, to hide things, the vegetation's going to eventually die out because there's no room for things to grow. I think your big, your biggest ally is, is distance. A little more distance will, will go a long way in, in screening something, uh, solar array.
Do you have a, uh, a sense of what kind of distance you're looking for?
I, I don't know if I personally could put a number on that right now. No. I, I'm, I even think a, a hundred feet is not a lot. It just, we, we talked about it a second ago, a lot of deciduous trees, I'm driving out there today. It, it's the springtime, everything's growing, but I know if, if you were to drive by out there in January or February, you could probably see a quarter mile, a half mile into the woods. So it's, it's really, I don't know if I could put a number on it right now.
Okay, thank you.
More than, more than what it is. I know that much. More than what's proposed, proposed initially.
Anybody else on the board have any questions? Okay, seeing none, uh, I guess you've got, I don't know if you call it a warm fuzzy feeling, but, um, I guess you can move to the next stage.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And if anybody else wants to go out there and look, um, you know, we, we still have to go by the COVID rules, but anybody wants to go out there and look, they certainly can. Thank you.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Hey, we have another pre-application, seven point six. The Huntley Building, owners DNS Development Group LLC, Stephen, uh, Gorman, applicant, DNS Development Group LLC, CO David J. Gorman, proposed as a combined lot sixty seven and sixty eight, construct a four unit commercial storage building. Anybody here for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Thomas Cronin, ten seventy Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island for the applicant.
Glad, Mr. Cronin.
Thank you. Uh, this is a pre-application, uh, for a development plan review. Despite it being a, a pre-application, uh, this board has seen this project before. So it's kind of one of these around the block kind of things. It was before this board, November eighteenth, twenty twenty, for a recommendation to town council, the changes on a lot sixty eight from residential to general business. This board, uh, reviewed the project and made a recommendation to town council. The town council held a public hearing on March twenty second, twenty twenty one and, uh, voted to approve the zone change. So that, uh, kind of brings us to where we are today. We're AP thirty eight, lot sixty seven and lot sixty eight are both zoned general business. Uh, these lots are on Arizona Street off of Tyo Avenue. It's just south of Tyo Avenue. Right now they're vacant land. Uh, the proposal is to merge these two lots and build a four thousand square foot commercial storage building, uh, prefabricated, single story, uh, building. We, we provided some elevation i- in the package. The, uh, the existing lots each have fifty feet of frontage on Arizona Street. Uh, lot sixty seven has seventy seven hundred square feet of area and lot sixty eight seventy three hundred. Well, the combined area is about fifteen thousand one hundred and eleven square feet. So we're taking two, uh, non-conforming lots and making one conforming lot over there on, uh, Arizona Street. To the north of this property, there's a vacant strip of land, uh, zone general business. To the east, there's a single lot, uh, which is owned half general business and half residential R twenty. Uh, it's the former Don's Auto Top. It's currently used for, uh, storage of automobiles. There's a vacant residential lot to the south. And west across Arizona streets are two single family homes, uh, seventy three and seventy four. Uh, both of those lots, despite having residential homes on them, are zone general business. This is the area of, uh, off of Tyo Avenue that, uh, this board has discussed many times, where the, uh, general business zone, uh, was a line drawn by the town approximately two hundred feet south of Tyo Avenue without any, uh, discrimination as to what might be there in order to facilitate the future development of Tyo Avenue. This building is, uh, eighty by fifty. The access will be from Arizona Street. It will have public sewer. It's going to have a private well. There's only a two inch water line in Arizona Street and they're unable to join that line. It's going to be divided into four units, four garages, for lack of a better word. Uh, they're expected to be used by tradesmen, um, plumbers, carpenters, those kinds of things to, uh, store their materials, equipment and trucks. Uh, you can see from the, uh, depiction before you that the, uh, entrances to the garage have been faced away, uh, from the street in an attempt to minimize, uh, the impact. Um, the, uh, all utilities will come off Arizona Street as well as the access, uh, to the driveway here. It does, the lot directly to the south is residential in nature. The applicant has agreed to install a six foot stockade privacy fence along this boundary, uh, into landscape along that fence, uh, to create a landscape buffer between this commercial use and the residential use, uh, proposed for the future. The, um, we are going to zoning, uh, for some relief. If you look to the northern edge of this drawing, you can see that the back of these garages are close to that vacant strip of land. Uh, we need landscape and setback relief along that boundary. Uh, we need landscape buffer relief along the vac, the vacant parcel, as well as I just described with the six foot privacy fence and additional, um, landscaping, only ten feet where twenty feet is requested in the ordinance. We're asking for relief for, uh, loading space as well. And the existing frontage is short of the one hundred and twenty five uh, required in the general business zone, although it doesn't appear that there's much, uh, we could do about that as it's existing. Uh, with me, uh, this evening is, uh, Pat Walker, who is the engineer on this project. If you have any questions about the design, this is, despite the fact that this is the second round, uh, before this board, uh, this is only pre-application and this is a, a conceptual plan. And we'll proceed from here to zoning and then back before this board for preliminary plan, uh, review.
Mr. Cronin, uh, can, can Mrs. Walker just address, I guess, uh, Mr. McGee and, and, and Mr. Hagaman have a lot of concerns with the drainage in that area? Could she just address that for the board, please?
Sure. I'm, I'm not sure that, uh, the drainage has been, uh, addressed at pre-application, Mr. Flynn, but I'll.
I know it's early, but I know the reports that they, they are concerned and they, they do call it a flood zone. So I just didn't know if, uh, there was anything being done to address that.
Pat, can you hear Mr. Flynn's question?
I can. So we have done some soil evaluations out in, on the site. Um, closer to Arizona Street, the water tables are, I believe they were two and three feet. Um, in the rear, I believe it was a five and a six foot water table. So that's why if you, Russell, I don't know if you can flip to the next plan. You can see up in the back there, we were looking at doing some type of probably, um, you know, an infiltration of basin type of thing in the vegetation. The other thing is it is going to be connected to the sewer, as you can see on the plan. Uh, that would require both the town and the West Warwick approvals as well, you know, ultimately from the town council. Uh, we are proposing, um, as Mr. Cronin said, the six foot high privacy fence on the south side adjacent to that vacant residential. On the north side, um, and coming across, uh, the frontage, we are proposing a three foot high split rail fence. Um, that twenty five foot strip to the north actually provides, is an access point to that rear property as well as they have frontage along Idaho. Um, they have, um, a fence along their rear line. So that would just, we wouldn't be impacting that. The one thing that we do need from the planning board would be a waiver for the width of the access drive. Typically it should be twenty four feet and we are proposing twenty two. Um, it should have minimal traffic coming in and out just because of the type of use. Uh, we are providing two parking spaces inside the building. And, um, the DNS development, uh, presently operates in that same manner. There are overhead doors. Um, the parking spaces in the front are, you know, basically one in front of the door. Uh, it's anticipated that the commercial, uh, vehicles would be parked inside at night. And then during the day, they would come out and the employees' vehicles would go inside. So it would have a minimal impact to the, um, surrounding area. So I don't know if you have any thought about the, uh, drive width. Um, as you can see, that it is fairly tight. Um, and just because it's going to have very low impact, the twenty two is not, it doesn't meet the twenty four foot width for, uh, the two-way, but it's fairly close and a standard travel lane can range from ten to twelve feet wide for each direction.
Thank you. A- any other members from the board, uh, have any questions?
Mr. Chair, Anderson.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Thanks. Okay. I guess my mic is on. Yeah. Hey, thanks for, uh, you know, letting the cat out of the bag and what you think is going to be there. It's nice, uh, you know, these, these, uh, small businesses all, it's just nice to have a place to put their vehicles instead of in their yards. This is a nice, nice development. I'm not sure if I, maybe I missed it or maybe I'm wrong, but couldn't you, uh, eliminate two of these reliefs? Was I right to say that you don't meet the, uh, the rear setback, which I think would be the, the south side? Um, and also the, the roadway. I, I thought I heard the south of that empty, that vacant residential lot. You're, you're, you're off by a couple of feet. Is that accurate, Mr. Cronin?
Yeah. So the, the width of the driveway off by a couple of feet.
Yeah.
And then the, uh, it would be the north side. Uh, it's the rear of the building, but side setback.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. I, I was, I'm looking at it the wrong way. All right. So, well, the only other thing is I know you got a twenty by, uh, fifty building. And, you know, I don't know, you could relieve, maybe have a little relief by making it a twenty by forty. I don't know if you'd eliminate things or eliminate, uh, your vision by shrinking that thing twenty feet or ten feet or whatever it may be. Just a thought. I just appreciate the development because like I said, there's a lot of, that need these places. Thank you.
So Mr. Anderson is a, is a highly technical, scientific method that goes into measuring, uh, how we, how large we build these, uh, garages and it's how long your trailer is plus how long your truck is.
Yes.
That's a, that's the, uh, standard.
Yeah. I know if you can, I know what's, you know, split hairs here, but you can eliminate some relief if, uh, if it was possible. I, I got to pose the question, right? I appreciate you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just a comment. I mean, I, I just went on Google, Arizona streets twenty five feet wide platted. I, I, it, the road looks like it's about eighteen feet wide paved. And then you're going to turn into a twenty two foot wide entrance, which again, only two feet of relief, but, um, Mr. Cronin, were, were you serious? Like we're talking about a truck with a trailer?
Yes.
Coming in and out of there, out of a twenty two foot wide driveway opening, turning onto a street that looks like there's about eighteen feet of pavement?
It, it's a goal, Mr. Clooney. It's, I, you know, the mechanics of how it actually work, I don't know, but that's the goal.
Yeah. I did the street view. It, the, the aerial isn't as, I wa, I was, what I was trying to ascertain was how close the residences were to the street on the other side. Um, and I realized the zoning's been changed, but is there any thought to, are they going to landscape the piece in the front from the driveway to the, you know, to the, to the north?
Yes.
So Miss, uh,
Yeah.
Miss Walker mentioned the, uh, decorative fence and some landscaping in that area.
Okay. Yep. That's fine. We'll wait for the plan. What was that, Russ? I thought you were just trying to measure that.
A building is showing on the other sheet, uh, the closest point to the right of way. Uh, twenty six, almost twenty seven feet and thirty five feet.
Yeah.
Look at the plan. So we, we tried to kind of centralize the building and actually it, it's further away than the buildings across the street. And as you can see on, on sheet.
Hey, it's, it's zone general business. So, but Russ, did you just try to measure that street width?
I did. I came up with eighteen feet, just like you had said, Mr. Clooney.
That was a guess.
That was a pretty good guess.
That's pretty narrow for, for commercial vehicles to be passing, you know, side by side, but I guess we'll leave it at that.
See the, we'll see, we'll see where it comes. Maybe we can shave it. Maybe you can.
Anybody else on the board have any questions? I'm not seeing any, Mr. Cronin.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll be going to zoning and then, uh, returning to you.
Thank.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Cronin.
Thank you. Thank you.
Want to state one more time, if anybody happens to be here for Woods at Red Brook Phase Three, that is being continued to June twenty-third. Okay, we're going to move, we have already moved seven-point-nine up. So it's a public hearing. Development plan and review for Sunset Tent and Sign Relocation Owner R and B LLC. CEO William Massar. Applicant Sunset Tent and Company. Proposed merging of lots thirty-four and thirty-five in a construction of a forty-eight-hundred square foot building for tent and sign business, AP forty-six lots thirty-four, eighty-five. Zone general business. Location is nine-twenty-five Main Street. Anybody here for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Thomas Cronin, ten-seventy Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island. You guys definitely backloaded the agenda for me today. The applicant is here for development plan review. It's a public hearing. The location of the property, right on Main Street, Sandy Bottom Road, in a very visible corner in town. It used to be the back lot of Merrill Motors. It's AP forty-six, lots thirty-four and thirty-five. Because of its prior or historical use, it's nearly all paved. It's just a paved parking lot. There's a small area crushed stone. It's bounded by Ocean State Aquatic, OSA, to the west where the former Merrill Motors building was. And then Sandy Bottom Road and Main Street to the north with the existing Sunset Tent location across the street from Main Street. There's commercial buildings to the east across Whipple Court. And there's a, a single-family residence to the south. We were before this board on January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one for pre-application and recommendation to zoning. We did obtain this board's recommendation. It did proceed to a public hearing at zoning on March third, twenty-twenty-one, where relief was granted for off-street loading, lot coverage and landscape buffers. The the proposal here is to construct a pre-preapplicated commercial building, single-story facing Main Street. Despite the fact that it'll face Main Street, the entrance to the parking area will be from Whipple Court. As far away from that intersection of Sandy Bottom Road and Main Street as we can get it. The actual entrance will be a short distance of Whipple so that it will lessen the impact on the neighbors who use Whipple. This is not a business that generates a lot of customer traffic. So that shouldn't have too big an impact in that regard. But you can see a depiction of the placement of the building as Mr. Crossman places it up. So the twenty-four-foot entrance close to Whipple Court, then there's an island on Whipple Court and then an additional eighteen-foot accessory entrance. So obviously, the utilities are going to come off Main Street. Here, there's public water. We have to have a private septic system, OWTS. There's no sewer in the area. And that is going to be placed in the, away from the Main Street front of the building towards the southeast corner along Whipple. The building is designed to be a drive-through building. You can see from the depiction here. The customers aren't going to drive into the building. Customers bring the vehicles to the establishment and the employees maneuver them around the parking lot and, and through the building. But it is, it is hoped that the drive-through would ease both their work environment and the traffic flow on the, on the site. So much like the last application, we have a residential property directly to the south here. And we have similarly agreed to put a six-foot privacy fence on our southern boundary between our lot and AP forty-six lot thirty-four-point-one. In addition, we'll have a landscape buffer next to the fence to provide additional screening to the residents. A decorative fence has been proposed for the separation between Ocean State Aquatics and, and the site along the Sandy Bottom Road area. There's a proposed sign at the corner of Sandy Bottom Road and Main Street. And then the public parking for the building is located to the north of the site along Main Street here. So obviously, this is a business that is leasing some property in town across the street, Main Street. They're looking to move to some property that they own and develop a better building for their process. They're also going to be bringing in some business from the city of Cranston to this site. We are, we are making a waiver request for some parking due to the design of the drive-through building here. Sixteen spaces are required at three hundred square feet, at one space for every three hundred square feet. Sixteen would be required and we have thirteen proposed. I have Pat Walker with me here this evening who designed, who did the site design to assist us with any questions the board might have with regard to the design. Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Before I open up public hearing, anybody on the board have any questions? Or, Miss Walker? I don't see.
Could I just add one thing? In the staff report, we actually did receive the site approval from the fire marshal today. I did follow that to Mr. Crossan and Mr. Studley. I have applied, or we have applied for the soil and erosion control. Mr. Hagaman does have a few comments. We were waiting to get all the comments back, so whatever tweaking. It mainly is, even though we're reducing the amount of impervious, we do have to do some additional water quality treatment related to the, probably the roof runoff. We are providing vegetated strip all around, which does act as pretreatment, but we will have to be doing something. So it'll probably be just some dry wells to catch some of the roof runoff, just to address that matter. So we will be taking care of that. The septic system is being, it's designed by Coventry Survey. They have submitted that. They have received a few comments back. And at this time, we are waiting for that preview to continue.
Thank you for that. Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Chair, just, I, I, we just talked about the town comments and thanks for addressing that. So that was pretty much the, you know, the drainage note that he had an issue with. Over here, he said also the grading design. I'm sorry, did you comment on the fact that he says the grading design appears to be changing somewhat? Did you also cover that in your comments? I'm sorry if I missed it.
It, it, actually, what I will do is we looked at the spot grades because that site, I'm sure you're familiar with it. It's fairly flat. Basically, it pretty much drains radially around. And it will, that's what we're going to still continue to do around the building. So we'll just add some spot grade, so there is no question, so that item will be addressed as well.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing that, let's take a motion to open up public hearing.
Should open public hearing.
Open a motion by Mr. Mattson. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Lukowitz. Okay, I'll do a roll call, just please. Mr. Burke.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
The Mattson.
Hi.
Ms. Lukowitz.
Hi.
Hi.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Okay, public hearing is open.
Yes, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here who would like to speak and be heard on this petition here this evening? Would anybody like to be heard on this petition here this evening? Mr. Flynn, I have no one raising their hands. I will ask one more time. Is there anybody who would like to be heard either for or against this petition here this evening? I have no hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
By Mr. Mattson. Do I have a second?
Mr. Ray seconds.
Mr. Ray seconds it. Okay, I'll go through a roll call. Mr. Ray's.
Aye.
Mr. Burke.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Colonian.
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Okay, public hearing is closed. Any other questions for the applicant?
I just want to follow up on a couple of things that are in the town manager's report.
Go ahead.
The is there zoning relief being, are these three items for zoning relief still on? I, I was confused. As far as the landscape buffer for adjacent residential use, the applicant requested a variance for the landscape buffers that, that are part of this project. So that's still there? Is, is that something that's outside of our purview? They've already gotten these?
That's correct, Mr. Colonian. We, we have obtained those, that we have obtained that relief.
Yeah, you have the ratifications at the bottom. I, I'm sorry. I was just trying to read down. And all the needed approvals, you said you have the Central Coventry Fire District now. Still need DEM, Kent County Water.
No, we already have Kent County Water as well.
Water, okay, I see that there now. Yep, and the, the utility services on, on of concern. Okay, I'm all set. Thank you.
So the only thing we're looking for from the planning commission is the waiver for the number of parking spaces. For the six, the thirteen that we're providing from the sixteen required.
Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Flynn, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Cross.
I'd just like to make sure, Ms. Walker said the septic system is still in design by Coventry Survey?
The design was submitted. They had received, I don't know if someone's here from there. I thought they were going to be here, but I guess not.
I see Sam. Sam's out on the, on the outer fringes. You want me to bring him in?
Or, that's fine. I don't know if Sam is the one or if it's John.
I just brought Sam in. Sam, is that you? Can you unmute?
Yep. Can everybody see, can everybody see me here?
We cannot see you, however, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Go ahead, Sam.
Um, yeah, so this is actually John's project, but I was here for the Huntley Building, so I'm still here. Um, and he responded to the comments from DEM and we're just waiting for response to those comments. So they were pretty minor. I can read off here. One was sewage is available in the right of way. Please connect to public sewers. But we cannot tie into those sewers because it's force made. So, so that was our response. And the other thing is, we're lots going to be merged and so we responded to that. Yes, the, we're proposing a lot merger through Ministry of Subdivision. The next one was, is there an existing cesspool on the site? You know, and we don't really know. We're assuming that it was the existing cesspool from the two former residents were eliminated when the, when the buildings were demolished. And then the fourth was the existing area where the septic system is proposed is that under pavement? And we got back to that one saying that the proposed septic system is not under any pavement and we're proposing grass over the, the proposed leach field. So those were the comments and we haven't received anything back yet.
All right, I would just I would just request a stipulation that they, they receive the OWTS approval prior to receiving final.
No objection.
You okay with that, Mr. Colonian?
Yes, yes. And, and, and the soil erosion and sediment control plan, same thing, right?
Um, that, that's fine if that's okay with the applicant. Usually, we'll make sure they do that prior to the issuance of a building permit, but I have no problem if they want to do that. I believe you, they've already submitted for it.
Yeah, I'm fine with the building permit too. I just want to make sure those are really the only two things the town cares about. Utilities, we don't care about, right?
That's a little too honest, Mr. Colonian.
We'll just put that in stipulations.
I don't think they're going to put a building up and then find out they can't get utility. I'm good. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Crossan, for those comments too. I don't see any. Let's entertain a motion.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for a approval of development plan review, R and B Properties LLC, the applicant being Sunset Tent, Sunset Tent Incorporated. The address on Main Street, assessment's flat, forty-six, lots thirty-four and thirty-five, and general business zone. This is a formerly used car lot, which is now going to be converted to a building with a tint and sign business. The applicant will be merging lots thirty-four and thirty-five and constructing a forty-eight-hundred plus or minus square foot building for the aforementioned business. The, give me a second. The development does not appear to impact the onsite wetlands. All the development is fifty feet from the wooded stream off-site and a hundred and fifty feet from the off-site stream. Given that the existing lot is an asphalt parking lot, the proposed landscape plan will likely improve the appearance and function of the site. There will be a dramatic decrease in the impervious surfaces. The area consists of a mix of local businesses, garages and single-family homes. Elevations provided by the applicant indicate that the proposed structure is very similar to what is existing in the area. The project will utilize a private onsite wastewater treatment system. Soil evaluations were performed in as, as the onsite wastewater treatment system was designed by the project survey. The plans were submitted to DEM for approval and that is pending. The applicant proposes ingress and egress via Whipple Court. This proposal should be adequate to handle vehicular traffic in the area. The proposed use is not expected to generate a large number of vehicles at one time. The applicant represents that the project will result in a decrease in impervious surface as paint parking areas will be removed and landscaping will be installed. The plan does not appear to place excessive stress on town services infrastructure. Overhead wires are proposed as they are already existing at the site. The connection will be coordinated with the appropriate utility companies. Objectionable features are generally located to the rear of the lot. Landscape buffers have been included in the proposed plan. The applicant has already received the variance for the size of such landscape buffers. The project appears to be generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. Proposed business is located in the appropriate zoning district. The project does not appear to adversely affect the environment. Property will be serviced by public water. Impervious surface areas, as I mentioned, will be reduced. The project already received relief from the zoning board for the landscape buffer, loading space requirements and lot coverage. This meets all other requirements of the zoning ordinance. The proposed use is not expected to generate much traffic. The ingress and egress via Whipple Court should be adequate to handle traffic in the area. This favorable approval is subject to the applicant obtaining the approval from the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management for an onsite wastewater treatment system prior to final approval and also obtaining a soil erosion and sediment control plan approved by the town engineer prior to building permit. And together with this favorable approval of the development plan, incorporate the waiver request for one parking. the waiver request for one parking space for each of three hundred square feet of gross. I don't know what GFA is right now. GFA for permitted business or commercial uses. The applicant is proposing thirteen parking spaces rather than the required sixteen spaces. I would like to incorporate the planning directly in this report into my motion.
Mr. Cronin, are you seeking final administrative?
I would make that request to the board.
Thank you. I'll amend my motion right now to include that. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Clonian, though I have a second.
Oh, second.
I second.
Second by Mr. Ray's. Any questions? Hearing none. Mr. Ray's.
Aye.
Mr. Burke.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Clonian.
Aye.
And Chairman Flynn also says aye.
Thank you, board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Have a good evening.
Does anybody need a five-minute break before we start the next pre-app? I mean, the Okay, we're gonna take a quick five minutes before we do the public hearing. Good job, Rocky. Good. You're a good dude. You're a good kid, friend. I love you. Right, hon?
Flynn, I don't think you're on mute.
That's the point. You see, behind the scenes. Right, boys? You're a good boy? Yeah. Going to mute. What are you eating, Ms. Lukowitz?
Corn curls.
You know what? I was gonna say bugles.
No, corn curls.
They didn't even make bugles anymore. Oh, yeah, they make them. They do?
I've never seen them.
DVS, you can grab them at. You're gonna, you're gonna spend thirty dollars for a bag, but it's worth.
I'm hungry.
So are the birds. I've been hearing them chirping all night long. Aren't they covered?
No, they've been quiet.
Oh, okay.
They're covered. If I take the cover off, you're gonna hear them. I had to turn the air off. It was so cold in here. I guess we're not gonna get the storm.
No storm, Sandy. It's over.
Oh, there you are.
Oh, I've been here.
Listening.
Yes, ma'am.
We're doing pretty good tonight.
I know. Only eight-thirty.
It's moving quicker than I thought it would.
Don't jinx yourself.
I know.
Unless, unless my Doppler's not current, it looks like we're gonna get whacked. I don't know. Maybe it's not current.
Oh.
Yeah, somebody correct me if I'm wrong. I'm pretty much. We need it. Looks like it's coming right.
Most of the weekend.
Looks like it's coming right down.
Where is it now?
Right now, it's in Thompson, Connecticut, it looks like.
Not far from you.
Nope.
I, I use my radar, and you are correct, sir. It is just hitting the corner of Rhode Island, and it is moving down, and we are gonna get hit with a nasty amount soon.
We don't want connection. Last one.
You wanna get this done, so we don't lose, and you have to stop it.
I'm ready to make a recommend.
Well, it's getting ugly.
We all set to continue?
Yeah, five minutes is up. Let's get this show on the road.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, everybody all set?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, this is a public hearing. It's a preliminary plan for Tallwood Estates owners. Seventeen Tallwoods LLC, CO ASCO Group. Applicants saying proposed sixty-two unit, single-family condominium residential cluster development with a private right-of-way creation. AP fifty lots eleven and twenty-three, it's Zoner twenty. Address is seventeen Tallwoods Drive. Anybody here representing the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, ten seventy Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island, Tom Cronin. Mr. Crossman didn't do me any favors, putting me back to back to back, but
Mr. Cronin.
Yes.
Would you like me to bring your clients in?
Yes.
Or would you rather keep them outside?
In, please.
All right, because it looks like Veronica has her hand up. So I'll bring her in. Hello? Is that Veronica or John?
It said Veronica. I brought her in, Russ.
Yeah, how come we can't hear her?
Maybe she's still on break.
Okay, and then there's a Giovanni.
That's John.
I just, I just promoted Veronica to panelist. And I'm bringing Giovanni in.
Don't worry. It just takes time.
And I am putting Giovanni on panel.
Here you are.
There it is. Thank you.
Hi, John.
Hi, John.
Thank you.
John, you can go to video if you would like to add your camera on. You are available to be on Zoom. Oh, Giovanni's on. He can add his camera if he'd like.
I don't, I don't know where he's at. That's okay. Let's go. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hey, Mr. Flynn, can I proceed?
Absolutely, Mr. Cronin.
Thank you. So Tallwoods, AP fifty lots eleven and twenty-three. Most of you have been out there on a nice sidewalk we took before they put it into that practice. It's owned, planned, unit development, formerly R twenty. The proposal is for sixty-two individual condominium units. This has been around the block. We first were before you, September twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, for pre-application. Then November twentieth, two thousand nineteen, for master plan, public hearing, and recommendation to town council for the zone change from R twenty to PUD. We had that public hearing at the town council on June eighth, twenty nineteen. Changing the zone from R twenty to PUD, and the master plan was granted as well on November twentieth, two thousand nineteen. The combined lots eleven and twenty-three are about forty-six acres, predominantly woodland. There's one existing structure on the northeast corner of the property, the small house. Flat River Reservoir to the north, Reservoir Road and its neighborhood to the east, Sharon Drive and its neighborhood to the west, and Regalwood Drive in the rest of Wood Estates north to the south. The area, the area is made up of single-family homes. Most, most all of you are familiar with that, with that area. At master plan, we showed this board that under the R twenty we could comfortably fit within the confines of the zoning and subdivision regulation, sixty-two single-family homes, which form the yield plan. And that is how we came up with the number of units, sixty-two individual units. Each of these units will be about one thousand two hundred square feet, and we'll have a two-car garage. They're placed on a ring.
I'm assuming we're talking about two thousand, in the vicinity of two thousand square feet and up. I'm sorry, Tim.
That's right, sure. And they'll be placed on a ring, ring road in the interior of the forty-six acres. And the way this is designed, Mr. Bean will explain it in greater detail. Is, provides for a twenty-three acre buffer around the development in between the individual condominium units and the surrounding neighborhoods. The condominiums, of course, will be on a private road, and the usual condominium restrictions would apply here. Private trash pickup, private road maintenance, private common area, landscape maintenance, snow plowing. You're all familiar with the condominium model. About fifty-one percent of the parcel is gonna remain in that wooded buffer, that wooded twenty-three acre buffer. We have public water access from Kent County Water. It's private OWTS. Mr. Bean will describe that in greater detail, as it is a shared model. One OWTS for each of, for two single condominium units. So two units on one OWTS. This project has its Rhode Island DEM stormwater permit. We are, we are requesting a waiver from the town because the town ordinance exceeds the DEM requirements, and there's some conflict there. We want to straighten that out and and get that waiver from this town board. Throughout the description of this property and the development over time, the term gated community has been used on some of the paperwork and some of the testimony. And I think that term was used loosely, because we are not planning on having an actual physical gate across the entryway at this time. You know, the entrance is from Regalwood and Orchid Drive in Wood Estates north, from the public street there, and that road will continue until the condominium property where it'll become a private road, but it'll flow. There won't be an interruption of a gate, and that should make it fit into the neighborhood a little bit better, blend in with the surroundings rather than having a physical barrier at that point.
I want to leave it ungated for now to let the budding community on their walks through the area to go through the new community, unless at the end the condominium association feels different. I think it's a great area to continue a walk or bike ride, and everybody want to open up to the budding area. Again, unless final decision in a couple of years from the condo associations. I'm sorry to interrupt.
It's okay. The, the final kind of just comment from me before we get to the engineering, which is why we're here, is that the parking requirements for the town are covered by four spots per unit, two cars in a two-car garage and two cars in the driveway. I, I don't want to give redundant testimony, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Bean to discuss the engineering, which is why we're here at preliminary. Mr. Flynn, Mr. Bean has appeared before this board on numerous occasions. I just asked that he be recognized as an expert engineer and allowed to testify.
Absolutely. Just name and address, please. Mr. Bean.
For the record, my name is Timothy Behan, professional engineer with the firm Commonwealth Engineers and Consultants, four hundred Smith Street, Providence, Rhode Island. I'd like to share the screen so I can walk through the, the plans and the project. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, very, very good. In summary, again, this is the subject parcel. It's forty-four point six acres in size, and we have sixty-two units in there. Each unit is a separate detached unit. These are not duplexes. It's one unit per structure. And I have a photo of the unit itself. This is not the, you know, it's gonna be something similar to this. This type of style. Back to the plan. We have Regalwood Drive down at this location. The entrance road is off Regalwood Drive. It would meet town standards in this section. On the, the town right-of-way, there would be twenty-six feet in width, and there would be a sidewalk on each side of the driveway at this location. Once it hits the subject property, it's gonna turn into a boulevard effect where we have a travel lane in and center island and a travel lane out. Each of those travel lanes would be twenty feet width. And this arrangement has been reviewed by the, the fire marshal and accepted. Then, once we get into the loop area, this is the loop road, and the travel lane width there is twenty-four feet, and each side would have bituminous Cape Cod-type berms. Okay. And the loop road itself would have a single And the loop road itself would have a single sidewalk around the entire loop. Stormwater, stormwater is captured with typical catch basins in the loop road and then pipe down to infiltration areas at the low end, which would be subsurface chambers, so there'd be grass on top, there'd be behind the units in this area down here. So the stormwater was designed to current DEM standards for water quality and recharge. And we have applied for DEM stormwater permit and we have that in hand, so that's already been approved by the DEM. Same as the soil erosion controls for the project, there's a soil erosion control plan set, we have plans and details and it's been designed in accordance with DEM and the town standards. And DEM has issued the so-called Ripley's permit for the soil erosion control portion of the project. Sewage disposal will be by onsite wastewater treatment systems. Each, each two buildings will go to one system, so there's a total of 31 systems on subject property. All the test holes for each of the systems have been coordinated with DEM and we have approved test holes in hand. Water supply is Kent County Water. And we're connecting to Regalwood Drive at this location here. And there's also two interconnects, interconnections, one to the end of Reservoir and one to Sharon Drive. This will greatly improve water quality in the area and have all those dead-end water mains looped, so Kent County look very favorable upon that. We have applied for the permit from Kent County and that is also in hand. Fire protection, we have coordinated the design with the fire marshal and their requirement was to have three hydrants and there are three hydrants within the loop area. We have a landscape plan. Let's see. This is the landscape plan and the plan set. And it was designed by a landscape architect, Karen Beck. And we have street trees planted around the loop road and some along the boulevard exterior and we have some plantings in the island as well. Some of those street, street trees include flowering dogwood, tulip tree and black gum and red oak. And some of the plantings in the island are mugo pine and a grow-low fragrant sumac. And we also have a wetland permit since we're abutting some the water body, the Flat River Reservoir and some spotty wetlands along the, the water body. DM has reviewed the project and has issued a freshwater wetlands permit for the project. So that's in summary, the engineering, if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. Mr. Cronin, you have anything else?
Oh, not at this time. We're available to answer any questions.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make one comment before I open it up to the board, you know, I'm a big fan of the single units. And I'm looking at the renditions and once again, a beautiful job on those. So if there's any questions for the board before I open up the public hearing.
I have a statement if no one, everyone seems. I just wanted, Tim, I want to confirm, the three hydrants, those are going to be private, so those are going to be owned and paid for by the HOA, correct?
Correct, the HOA pays the, the fee, the hydrant fees.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that, okay. And the fire department was the one that had requested the three hydrants, correct?
Yes, the local fire marshal for this jurisdiction, yes.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Burke.
Go ahead, Mr. Burke.
I have a couple of questions. One's going to be for, actually for, for planning staff, I'll get to that in a second. The, one of the first questions, Mr. Bean, and I'm, I'm late to all of this, I'm sorry, I know it's been on the table for a while now. I see on the plans a roadway somewhere around unit one and it goes down towards the water and it travels along the water behind about 13 units?
Oh, that's, that's a grass paved maintenance driveway to get to the various stormwater features down there.
Okay. My next question, and again, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm late to this, I don't know if this has been addressed before. Do the, do the residents have any access to the water?
I'd like to answer that if I might. On the plan also, I don't have it in front of me, but it'll be a, a pathway most likely gravel that each resident will have access to the water. We're also making preparations that on a low-impact basis are those that do not live on the water that may otherwise get permits for boating, but the majority of the people have access for a canoe or a paddleboard. There'll be no parking in this area, so they'll bring it down and bring it back. So the whole idea is for everyone in the community to have access to the water. Those on the so-called waterfront will be up to them and DEM what they may have, be allowed down there.
Okay, I, I just wanted to see if there was some type of a, a common access provided, you know, I, I didn't want to see people from one end of the community walking in between units to try and get down to the water.
We need, thank you.
Are there any plans in the future for, for docks or anything down there, is that?
I, I think what's gonna, I think what's gonna happen is that the, the people down on the so-called waterfront will have to work with the DEM on what's to be approved and what's not to be approved. There's no, in my understanding, there's no chance that there's going to be a, a, a lot of docks down there. The ultimate goal would be a dock for each, one dock for each resident. Half, one side, half the other side for two buildings for a boating dock. That would be the ultimate goal, but there's nothing guaranteed on that.
Okay.
You all set, Mr. Burke?
No, I'm sorry, I think I just got kicked out for a second. No, I had, I had two other questions, actually, one, one's a comment for Mr. Cronin. We received the, your HOA documents yesterday and just flipping through them. I had noticed, I think it might have been an oversight, maybe a typo on page six of the HOA doc. Upon completion, the condominium, it's a description of the condominium will consist of 38 units and 19 buildings.
I apologize, that was just an oversight on my part.
That's, that's, that's okay. And then one of the questions, I guess this is, this is directed to planning staff. Mr. Crossman.
I'm listening.
The, and again, I apologize because I'm late to all of this, the fiscal impact study that was attached to this and given to us, is that provided by the town or provided by the applicant?
The applicant provides that.
Am I correct in seeing that some of these numbers are from 2006 and 2007?
That is, that's one of my things on my list, that, that needs to be updated in the worst way. It is an antiquated form that has been around. We do need new numbers, but yes, that is an old antiquated and it needs updating.
Yeah, a lot's changed in 15 years, okay.
Again, it's just to give. The number's not going to change all that much, you know, you know, you'll see an increase or a dec, a, a small increase, but or decrease, but it's not all that, going to be all that great.
Okay, and then I have one more question for you because I wasn't really, I don't know too much on it, could you explain checklist waiver number 44?
Yeah, I know what that is off the top of my head, what's 44?
It's, hold on a second, I got it right here. Location dimensions of all proposed utilities immediately adjacent to the subdivision within an immediately adjacent.
Tim, you remember that was on the front cover and you took that one off.
Yeah, no, we, we took that off. That was hanging from master plan and all the utilities shown except for the ones designed by the, you know, utility companies, the electric is going to be designed by the utility company and that comes after preliminary plan, they, they won't start designing until after this is approved.
Okay, so he doesn't need that waiver anymore?
Yeah.
Okay, that way he's not asking for that as a waiver.
Okay, I think I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Anybody else on the board have any questions before I open up public hearing? Go ahead, Mr. Cronin.
Yeah, just one clarification, so now I think we've touched on all five of the things in the planning directive report, four of them have been addressed. The concrete curving and sidewalks being installed at the proposed Regalwood Drive access. So sidewalks both sides of Regalwood Drive until they get to the actual entrance of the property.
That is correct.
And that, now that's a town road up to that point.
That is a town right-of-way up to our property.
Right, so have you given any thought, like who's going to be, is the town going to be plowing that?
That would be a great opportunity if they did that, but we're not asking for that whatsoever, would really be nice, but no.
So you envision taking care of the snow removal and the maintenance right from Regalwood Drive all the way in, all the way in?
That's correct.
Other, other than major road maintenance, like paving and potholes, that's the town's responsibility. Okay, I, I just asked because if they were going to have to remove the snow, then we're going to need a place to put it. Okay, that's it, that was my only question.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin, anybody else? Okay, seeing that, I'll take a motion to open up public hearing.
Motion open public hearing.
Mr. Mattson, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Lukewitz. Okay, Mr. Rayes.
Aye.
Mr. Burke.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Ms. Lukewitz.
Aye.
Mr. Cronin.
Aye.
David Flynn also says aye, a public hearing is now open.
Okay. We have 12 people still watching, is there anybody here this evening who would like to be heard? I have a hand, I believe that is Mr. White. Just please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening, my name is Keith White, I live at 133 Reservoir Road and my daughter lives at 135 and I also have a tenant at a house at 136 Reservoir Road, I'm, I'm abutting at the end of Reservoir Road. Did everyone hear that? Okay, just my quick concerns as always are as in a butter. I want to know what I'm going to be living with for the rest of my life, as short as it may be. But primarily, I want to make sure that we all understand the word buffer means buffer, that it doesn't mean that there will, I'll end up having dumpsters and porta-johns and boat trailers and kayak racks and a whole host of things that are going to happen in the presumably clubhouse building that's at the end of Reservoir Road. So I'd just like to hear some assurances again on that topic.
Keith, the, it's, it's been the premise from the beginning that there'll be no parking down there other than maybe people want to have events at the, at the clubhouse if there's room for that. But there's not going to be any parking to drop off. There's not going to be any passage in there for cars to come in and drop off boats, it's not for that. It's for the sole purpose for people if they want to come down, have a swim, they want to go fishing, I mean, there's 1,500 feet of frontage, but that particular area, they can go fishing there, they can put a paddleboat in there, a canoe or a kayak and that's it, it's never been, we've never deviated that from the beginning.
Understood, and I trust you, John, on that topic, we've spoken many times about it. I, I think part of this is just to make sure that the board understands the position of me as in a butter and I think presumably my fellow Reservoir Road residents who want to make certain that there's, for example, out of 64 units, if everybody had a friend over, you're up to 128 people. We wouldn't want 128 cars parking at the end of Reservoir Road having a hootenanny down at the clubhouse.
Oh, I think there's enough hootenannies on Reservoir Road, we're not going to win the competition with them.
Understood.
Then may I make a suggestion here that might help Mr. White out? What I'm thinking is maybe we could add some language to the HOA docs that specifically addresses, like John said, what is allowed to be put down there, specify canoe, paddleboard. The fact that there will be no dumpsters, no porta-johns, I mean, is that, that's something I think the board should consider, having that language put in the HOA docs.
We have a, regarding porta-johns, we have a, a new system approved by DEM for the cabinet's down there and we're not going to have any porta-johns throughout the area. Good suggestion.
And, and I would concur that, again, I don't expect John Assalone to put that there nor anything in the first, the infancy of the development. But I'm more concerned about, you know, in perpetuity, five years, 10 years, 20 years down the road, yeah, as my daughter lives next door, she's the last house on the right. And we want to be, we, we intend to be good neighbors on our side of the boundary line. We want to make sure that those 64 folks are also good neighbors on their side and don't take advantage of the close proximity that they have to me. In addition, again, you know, I love swimming in the lake with everybody else and soon as we get some water in it, I'm sure we'll all enjoy swimming there, but the, that was tongue-in-cheek, John. But, but the, but my concern is also, how close is that, you know, is the clubhouse going to do stuff? You know, put swimming ropes up, have relay races coming down to my, you know, from their dock to my dock. Again, I, I, I don't mean to belabor the point, I'll get off, I'm dominating the time, but again, those, these are my concerns. I want to make sure that the word buffer remains the word buffer. Thank you, and then my only last point is, I didn't know that, I just found out that Kent County is going to be doing something from the end of our road. I would like to hear an assurance that that's a positive feature for the, for the resident, Reservoir Road residents.
That would be up to Tim, I think, Tim?
Yeah, no, Kent County, very desirable, right now you have a water main that terminates at the end of the road. So that gives you less water quality because the, the water doesn't get flushed through as much. It has to wait till all the users use the water to get the water to the end of the line. So by connecting it to other pipelines, the water is continuously moving through the system. It also gives more pressure to the areas down there as well because it's going to connect our development to Reservoir to Sharon. So that whole area at the end of the road, Kent County was extremely favorable. They wanted that, they told us, they directed us to do that.
Will there be any, when they do that construction, is that going to block the road at the end?
Well, maybe temporarily for a day, some traffic control or something, they, they need to tap into the existing main to tie into it. So, you know, there'll be a day or two of that tap, other than that, they're going to run pipe up the hill away from that area.
So I'll need permission to park on John's lot. Just kidding, just kidding, just, good night, thank you very much, folks.
Thank you, thanks for your comments and questions.
Okay, I have another individual, a Mr. John Juisty, I'm going to bring him in.
Hi, good evening, thank you, Russell, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, name it for the record, please.
Yep, this is John Juisty III, I'm on 9 Regalwood Drive in Coventry. First of all, thank you, members of the board, for the opportunity to speak and ask a couple of questions here. First question, I actually, on Mr. White's point about the buffer, I know I see in the, the plan view that there's a, a undisturbed vegetation buffer and I just wanted to make sure that that is not going to be disturbed, I know this, that it would not be, but sometimes I know things can change. Is there any plan for the landscape plan that you had put forward with Karen? That they would put any sort of additional trees as an actual buffer along the abutting properties?
I don't, I, I don't really, Tim, you can address, I don't really understand the question, but there's massive areas of open space, woodlands against abutting properties, nobody, there's not a house, to my knowledge, anywhere near the abutting property owners.
Tim, could you bring up that plan again, do you want me to share my screen or you share yours?
I'll, I'll, let me call up that plan.
Yeah, because Mr. Juisty lives in the second house over from the right where Regalwood and Tallwoods there.
Let's see, let me zoom in.
So you see, see where it says proposed entrance Boulevard and then there's a house? Scroll down, right there on Regalwood. Right there on Regalwood. Go all the, keep going over to the right. Keep going. I believe that's Mr., right, I believe that's his house.
One to the left. You got, one to the left. Yeah, you got it.
Okay.
I think that's a massive buffer area. We have no intention of going in there other than, uh, possibly cleaning up some of the junk that people have put behind their houses.
Okay, just wanted,
let's see.
And a lot of junk back there.
Right. No, I just wanted to make sure and that, and that, what's the distance there for that buffer? I know.
This house, that's two hundred and thirty feet to the structure, to the structure.
Okay.
Do that. So you're, I think you said you were this one?
That is correct. Yes, Tim.
So the, the limited disturbance, this is, they're going to come in here, stake this line. They're going to take the trees out, you know, in this area. But these trees are going to remain.
All right, very good.
Okay.
Yep. And then one other question, sort of, I know we mentioned this at the last hearing, as far as lighting in the back. Are there lighting at, is it one story? Is it going to be two stories high with the lighting or has that been determined yet?
I don't understand the question about two-story led. Are you talking about huge poles in there of great height?
With, uh, in reference to the units, I know units in the backyard where they have that are facing towards like the budding properties.
We all have a, uh, uh, probably a spotlight in the back of their homes, like everybody else does. Um, but there's no excessive lighting back there whatsoever.
Okay. All right, very good. And I guess the last question, sorry, and I'll finish after this, was, I know you had brought up the right-of-way being through Regalwood Drive, and there was an emergency exit that will, or entranceway that would be gated, right on Tallwoods. Now, was there any consideration to there being a, like a one, a one-way? Because I know the, the width wasn't wide enough for, for a two-way traffic. Has that been a consideration to limit traffic and, and, and create a ease of, ease of flow?
So, so Mr. Juisty, that a- aspect of the plan, um, has changed
Okay.
since master plan.
Yes, look different.
Yeah, and the Tallwoods, uh, access point was removed. You're right. It was not a very, uh, popular item. Uh, and we, we tried to, uh, redesign to accommodate that. And, uh, as, uh, Mr. Bean explained, uh, the only entrance and exit will be through, uh, Regalwood and Orchard Trail, I believe it's that little stub is known as, uh, with that Boulevard, uh, separating the, uh, ingress and egress from the private road.
Okay. All right, no, thanks for clarifying. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Have a great night, guys.
Thanks for the question. Anybody else, Mr. Crossman?
Yes, I have another one. Um, Kim? Kim, if you just could, uh, unmute and state your name and address, please?
Good evening. Uh, this is Robert Thayer, uh, fifteen Regalwood Drive. I just wanted to follow up on that last point, um, the Tallwood, the removal of the entrance on Tallwood. I completely understood the issue previously with the limited space. And I remain strongly in favor of the design details of the development, but I am questioning with a twenty-eight-foot-wide entrance opening up to a Boulevard design, why is that not moved over to Tallwoods so the entrance to Tallwood Estates remains on Tallwood?
I think, Mr. Thayer, that the same restriction, um, to the public right-of-way remains on Tallwoods from the adjoining, uh, private property owner. As, as we discussed, uh, thought, you know, I, I know you brought this up, uh, and we, you know, took a look at the plans, uh, together, um, that obstructing corner of the property from the adjacent private property owner is, is a barrier, uh, to the proper use of that public right-of-way. Um, and that's why the focus remains on Regalwood.
Okay, so I thought the issue was that you didn't have the fifty-foot you needed. But with the new design, which I'm in favor of, you have the narrower approach, so you don't even have the twenty-eight feet necessary to gain entrance to the lot and then go into the Boulevard design?
So, Tim, you want to explain, uh, the right-of-way roadway design better than I can?
Sure. The, um, actual right-of-way width at Tallwoods has a pin, pinch point. And, and that width is thirty-three feet. The actual right-of-way, where the room we have to work in, in our entrance, uh, roadway, even though it's, it's what, twenty, twenty-six and one, is, is twenty-seven feet outside curb to curb. Then we have a, a small grass strip and then sidewalks on both sides. So physically, you can't get all that infrastructure into the thirty-three feet there.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I mean, again, I just want to go on record. I'm in favor of what's being done with the land. Uh, it's the best design that I could imagine happening back there. But I still think even the applicant has had to change their plans for Tallwood Estates because the town made a mistake in the past and gave away land that was supposed to be held as open space. And now that the entrance to this community is compromised because of the town's mistake in, in the past. Right? So ideally, if that, if the town had never made the mistake in the redistricting of that lot prior to this development, we wouldn't be having this conversation. The design would be through Tallwoods. And it would look very similar to what we have on Regalwood. The issue I have with Regalwood is it's introducing the only four-way intersection in all of Wood Estates North, where we're bottlenecking sixty-two houses through a four-way intersection where the design of Wood Estates North is everything is a perpendicular intersection. And Tallwoods would provide that same does road design if the town hadn't given away the right-of-way and made the applicant change to this backup plan. And I don't know if the town is in a position to correct that mistake.
You know, I, I, I think, I'm sorry, Mr., I just think we have what we have. This goes back years ago. We tried every way to see if we could work with that. And I think, uh, an entrance with a Boulevard is, is, is going to look incredibly nice. It's going to be a two-way traffic. The fire department is very happy with it. And we're working with what we have to work with. I have nothing to do with that calculation, and that was, that was many years ago. So I'm not throwing stones at anybody.
Yeah, no, and, and I agree with you, John. I think the design, the revised design looks better than the original design, and I, I think it, it's a, it's a favorable design. I just do think it would have been on Tallwoods if, if the town hadn't given away the space, and I don't know what opportunity the town has to get it back.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Anybody else, Mr. Crossman?
Is there anybody else who would like to be heard on this petition here this evening? Uh, I have no answer. Is there anybody else who would like to be heard here this evening, uh, on this application? I will ask one more time. Is there anybody who would like to be heard here this evening on this application? Mr. Flynn, I have no one this evening.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
I second.
Mr. Mattson made the motion to close public hearing and Ms. Lukewitz made the second. Okay, Mr. Rayes?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukewitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooney?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. Public hearing is now closed. Anybody else on the board have any questions for the applicant?
I, I just, just to, um, thumping the planning directors' report, um, Mr. Cronin, so now that, I, I, are you asking for any waivers at all if this gets approved tonight?
We are, uh, Mr. Clooney. The single waiver we're requesting is the, to justify the, uh, difference between the town, uh, subdivision regulation with regard to stormwater drainage and the Rhode Island DEM stormwater approval. Um, the, uh, town engineer has, um, supported that, uh, waiver and, uh, it's, it's just the, uh, the town regs and the DEM regs are, uh, are out of line and, uh, can't be fully aligned. So that's, that's the waiver we're requesting.
Okay.
Anybody else on the board? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll make a motion.
Well, Mr. Clooney?
I'd like to make a motion for a approval of the preliminary plan, the major land development, Tallwood Estates residential plan unit development, seventeen Tallwoods L, LC, Tallwoods Drive, Regalwood Drive, Reservoir Road and Sharon Drive. This is assesses plat fifty, lot eleven and twenty-three in the R twenty zone. The existing use is undeveloped and the proposed use is a, uh, sixty-two unit condominium development. On a private road with private utilities, infrastructure, stormwater mitigation and landscaping. The page, yes, sorry. Future land use element of this project identifies this neighborhood as medium-density residential and the proposed land development project meets the criteria that defines medium density residential. This includes but is not limited to lot sizes, availability of public services, transportation, access and public utilities. This proposed sixty-two unit condominium development is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. This proposal will not likely have a, any negative significant environmental impacts. The subdivision will be reviewed by the town engineer and OI DEM to ensure that the project conforms with both local and state regulations with respect to stormwater management, onsite wastewater treatment systems, quality of stormwater leaving the site, the implementation of best management practices, which may include either sand filters or bio-retention filters and provide underground control of rooftop runoff. The subject property is zone R twenty and the proposed density is within the limits established by that zone and conforms to the ordinance after receiving a zone, zone change from the town council. The proposed sixty-two unit condominium development is not expected to have any significant negative impact on the adjacent roadways. The traffic analysis have indicated there will be no decrease in the limited service of the, of the neighborhood intersections. More in here somewhere. Okay, um, I guess, uh, that, that does it. I'd like to incorporate the planning director's report and also recommend, uh, or include in my motion, the waiver for the stormwater management regulations, uh, and allowing the applicant to go by the state standard as opposed to the town standard.
Hey, Mr. Cronin, final administrative?
That would be, uh, preferable. Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Thank you for the reminder, and yes, um, I'll add to my motion that the application may proceed administratively to final approval.
Thank you, Mr. Clooney, for that. I have a motion by Mr. Clooney. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Anderson.
I have a second by Mr. Anderson.
Can I, uh, can I interject?
Go ahead, Mr. Crossman.
Okay, um, what about those stipulations in the HOA regarding, is that something you guys want to, I brought up earlier? It's up to you guys, you know, we talked about garbage, you know, not garbage, but you know, stuff down by the waterfront, you know, near Mr. White, you know, uh, what they could put in the water, what they, um, could not, you know, no porta-potties, no dumpsters, stuff like that. If you feel comfortable that, you know, or if you wanted to put it in the HOA, that's fine too. And the only other thing I wanted to do was, I wanted to reference, um, in Mr. Clooney's, uh, mention of the waiver, um, it's, uh, in, the waiver they're looking for is from paragraph thirteen D six from the subdivision and land development regulations. I just wanted to make sure I had that specific language in there.
Would you like to add that, Mr. Clooney?
Uh, we ended discussion?
Uh, yeah, but would you want to amend your motion?
I, I'm going to, but before I amend my motion, I don't, I don't want to have to do it twice. So I would like to incorporate that chapter that Mr. Crossman just cited into my motion when I refer to the waiver. Um, I want to go back to Mr. White's point, which I think was somewhat valid, but I also don't want to, um, you know, tie the hands of the applicant in this case, so, um, I, I mean, maybe we could just, you could just explore the feasibility of tightening up the allowable uses in the common areas.
Rick, I'm not worried about the app, the developer. I'm worried about in ten years, when the developer has turned over this project to an HOA.
Correct.
And let's say we have a president of an HOA who wants, uh, everybody gets, they buy everybody a canoe and they're all bringing their canoes down there.
Correct, un- understood, understood. And that, that was my point. And, and let's hope it doesn't take ten years, but, um, the, that was my point. I think that perhaps, Mr. Cronin, see, I, in all fairness, I did not have an opportunity to go through all of those HOA documents between the time I got them yesterday and today. So I haven't seen them for myself, so I don't really feel it's my place to sit and start suggesting what needs to be added. So my, my only um, thing I would want to add to my motion is that the applicant, um, review the HOA documents and explore the feasibility of adding some language that tightens up the allowable uses for the, for the common areas, the, the, the so-called, you know, undisturbed vegetation area and the other common areas within there to, you know, just make sure that the the place is well-kept in the future and we'll leave.
I think that's, I think that's a good idea. We have no problem with that whatsoever to work with you on that and the budding property owners. Great idea.
That's it. So those two things to my amended motion.
Thank you. And, uh, do I amend a second?
I second.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. Take a roll call, Mr. Rayes?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Ms. Lukewitz?
Aye.
Mr. Clooney?
Aye.
And Chairman Flynn also says aye.
Well, we thank the board. Thank you for your time and understanding.
Thank Mr. Assalone again for putting up a nice project and working with the surrounding neighbors. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your support and, uh, I hope we will never disappoint you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a second.
I have a second by Ms. Lukewitz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Me neither. See you next month.
Nice work, guys.
Thank you.